Ron, today we got Bob Moreno from our Veteran Service Commission is going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance and our prayer.
Everybody would stand, veterans, it's appropriate for you to salute. Everyone else should put their right hand over their heart to say the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Lord, please protect our young men and women who are serving this country. That save us our freedoms that we have today, because freedom is fragile. And we could lose it at any time. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, our next public workshop will be next Tuesday, November seventh, ten a.m. in this room. Our next regular meeting will be next Wednesday, November eighth. At ten thirty a.m. also in this room. And following today's meeting at one p.m., we do have a public transportation informational meeting. And public is welcome to attend that also. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And accept and approve the video recording of the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three Commissioner's Regular Meeting is the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to transfer appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to approve an annual payment of two thousand five hundred dollars to the Trumbull County Family and Children First Council for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute on behalf of Trumbull County. This thirty-sixth renewal of the Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, and the State Victims Assistance Act, SVAA. Grant application proposal for the Trumbull County Witness Victim slash Witness Division of the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office. The grant is for the period of October first, two thousand and twenty-three through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. The total proposed grant amount of the grant is seventy-five thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars. With Victims of Crime Act grant monies funding sixty-six thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars. And Trumbull County's local twenty percent required match of sixteen thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to adopt a resolution to participate in Operation Green Light. From November sixth through November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three in Trumbull County, Ohio. In patriotic tradition, to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom. The Trumbull County Commissioners, together with the Trumbull County Veteran Service Commission. Are encouraging all Trumbull County employees and residents to participate by placing green lights in a window of their place of business or residence.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nine is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute a letter to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. Authorizing Gary E. Newbrow, P.E., to submit and sign all necessary National Pollution Discharge Elimination System documents related to Trumbull County's wastewater treatment infrastructure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number ten is to approve change order number three, final with Pollard Land Services, Inc. For the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, number five dash S dash thirteen. Change order number three is a net reduction of twenty-three thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. Reducing the total contract value to two million eight hundred seventy thousand eight hundred seven dollars and forty-six cents as a result of the final calculation of quantities.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to authorize the Board of Commissioners clerk to advertise for professional qualifications for the design of the Trumbull County Dog Pound Facility.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to receive and place on file the September and October two thousand and twenty-third. Two thousand and twenty-three monthly financial report for the Trumbull County Tourism Bureau.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing declarations of official intent. Under U.S. Treasury regulations with respect to reimbursements from securities. Proceeds of temporary advances made for payment prior to issuance of securities and related matters. And I'll read a little bit more, whereas Treasury Regulations. One point one five zero dash two prescribed conditions. Under which proceeds of tax exempt bonds will be deemed to be spent for purposes of section one oh three. And one forty-one to one fifty of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six has amended the code. When used to reimburse expenditures paid before the issuance of those bonds. And whereas certain provisions of the reimbursement regulations require. That there be a declaration of official intent not late, not later than sixty days. Following payment of the expenditure expected to be reimbursed for the proceeds of such obligations. And that the reimbursements occur within prescribed time periods after the expenditure is paid. Or after property is placed in service. And whereas this board desires to take steps to comply with those regulations to protect this county's ability to finance projects on a tax exempt basis.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I wanted to find out what project specifically prompted this action. I know, is Mr. Newbrow in here?
This would be Martha, this is a Martha thing.
Actually. Oh, it is. It was, yeah, I spoke to Bond Counsel and they said that it stemmed from a need in the Sanitary Engineers Department.
That's actually not what they said in the email. That was one of the projects. One, there's several capital improvement projects that we've been discussing. Among them, the, the Dog Pound that we just talked about, that's there's potential for capital monies needed for borrowing for that. There's also the borrowing for sanitary, that's one. There's the roof for the engineers. There's the stone building. So there's several that we're talking about. There's also HVAC work at the engineers' building. As well as the windows for JFS. So there's several projects that we're sort of working towards on these things. And the reason that we'll be borrowing, those are, those are reasons we'll be borrowing. The reason we're doing this note in, or this in anticipation. Is because it's cheaper for us to wait until we're in March where we have to roll over those bonds. But there's several projects, not just the sanitary. The sanitary is probably the most immediate, but there's several that will be before March.
Which sanitary one is it? Cause I, well, I called Bond Counsel to find out because we would have left out. And that's the only project that they.
Nobody's actually been left out. We've talked about this several times that at workshops, which you're invited to attend. Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I forgot.
Okay. I, I like to see things and this is the first time I had communication with the actual Bond Counsel. And I listen to the meetings, but it's different when you hear from the recommending body, which is in Cleveland. So I was on the phone with them to find out more information.
Gary Newbrow.
Only one that they brought up.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. On our Meadowbrook project, we are currently awaiting for the funding to be approved through the agencies. But Burgess and Nyple is going to need a modification to their contract for construction administration and inspection. I expect that modification to be over a half a million dollars. And we currently have no way to encumber those funds so. To execute that contract before the funding sources have their funds available. So I need this to encumber their contract. Once the contract is encumbered. We pay the invoices, we submit it to the grant sources for reimbursement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the quarterly operator fleet permit requested by the company listed. And that's Mountain Run Forestry LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils. Requested by the company listed, and that's J. Road Transportation Services, Inc.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies and residents listed. That's Dominion East, Ohio, Liler's Business Services, Northeast Ohio Natural Gas Corp., James Palmer. Peggy Kekich, and Miller Yount Paving.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit. Requested by the company listed, and that's Garth Bonar Trucking and Excavating.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to reappoint Mr. Thomas Connolly. To serve as a member of the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County. For an additional three-year period commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-three through January first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to reappoint Ms. Dawn Ockman. To serve as a member of the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County for an additional three-year period commencing January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Through January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty is to reappoint Ms. Erin Conisek. To serve as a member of the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County for an additional three-year period. Commencing August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three through August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-one is to reappoint Ms. Tia Toll's to serve as a member of the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County. For an additional three-year period commencing April first, two thousand and twenty-three through April first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-two to reappoint Ms. Melissa Caple to serve as a member of the Workforce Development Board. Of Trumbull County for an additional three-year period commencing April first, two thousand and twenty-three through April first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three is to appoint Ms. Jerry Jenkins to serve as a member of the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County. To an initial two-year term commencing October first, two thousand and twenty-three through October first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-four is to appoint Mr. John Safranco to serve as a member of the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County. To an initial two-year term commencing October first, two thousand and twenty-three through October first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-five is to appoint Mr. Wiley Runstrand to serve as a member of the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County. To an initial two-year term commencing October first, two thousand and twenty-three through October first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-six is to appoint Ms. Sarah Dogarty to serve as a member of the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County. To an initial two-year term commencing October first, two thousand and twenty-three through October first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I, not all departments take the suggestions that I've made. And not all departments and boards follow our policy that we journalized the first year I was here, which is that everything would be advertised. But Mr. Turner has done so much. They've even updated, him and Dimitri have updated their SOPs to make sure that they're advertising. When I first started, this workforce development board was full of people who'd been on there for so many years. And I looked at the applications and saw the efforts that they made to bring new people in. And it's, it's more diverse. It's got people who are qualified in different areas. And I'm just thankful for the work that they've done in order to recruit, I believe, in a better way. And we've got wonderful applicants that are, that are, that are being appointed. So I wanted to say thank you, because they're really some good people here.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-seven is to authorize the transfer of Mr. Bailey Slick.
I'd like to read this one and make a change. So to, motion to authorize the transfer of Mr. Bailey Slick, custodian Building Maintenance Department, pay range three, four years, seventeen point oh eight. To the position of building inspection trainee at the building inspection department, pay range four, four years. Eighteen dollars and forty-two cents effective. November first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes. And did you catch that change? Yes, okay.
Item number twenty-eight is to approve the Consolidated Budget Reconciliation Act, COBRA rates. Effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-nine is to approve the new charge-back rates to be assessed to departments participating in the health insurance, insurance plans offered by the commissioners. Commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. These are the same, are these the same as last year? Because it looks like if there's a change that we have effective January twenty-one, twenty-four. To December thirty-first, it should reflect, in my opinion, the, the new amounts. It's okay. The.
Commissioners, these are the new amounts. You, you want to see two thousand and twenty-three's? So the new amounts are listed. This is what we're asking. This is what the COBRA rates are for two thousand and twenty-four.
Two thousand and twenty-four. Okay.
So the rates that are for two thousand and twenty-three are what you guys currently journalized last year. So.
Well.
And they change every year.
I see it change. On, on the first page, Consolidated Budget, Budget Regul, the COBRA is seven sixty-nine, one ninety-two. And on here, it's six seventy-eight, one. I just wondered why it's different. And I don't see, like, when things come over, I like to see what the change is, because I see what you're suggesting for this year. But I didn't see anything about last year or any kind of narrative about what the change.
Alex Gainer, Divan Johnson, Bush. So we have an insurance broker, which is Rossi. They send us over the consolidated, the COBRA rates. And it basically is what it is. I hate to say this, but you can Google it. There's really nothing to say. This is why it changes. The market industry has changed immensely with healthcare. I can also provide you with just some research that I did on my own. So I always go to the SERB two thousand and twenty-two. So obviously, we haven't done two thousand and twenty-three yet. They do a review every year. And that can attest and show you the nineteen point nine percent increase since two thousand and eighteen in COBRA rates, health insurance rates. That's just the marketed today. I mean. I hate to say that, but it kind of is what it is.
So it went up from last.
Oh, yes. Yeah. And it consistently goes up every year. So last year went up from two thousand and twenty-two, so on and so forth. And it will continue to go up, especially with the market, the way that it is. Insurance, as we all know here, homeowners insurance, health insurance, it's all kind of the same thing. It, it goes up based off of claims. And there has been a significant increase in claims, especially since COVID, just across the United States of America. So this is something that's very, was much expected.
So in the, in the future, if you're sending something over that's cost-related, if you could include what it was. In two thousand and twenty, you know, the previous year and this year, so that even the public can see the difference, you know?
Sure. That's no, that's no problem.
Okay.
And then the next one too, I'll stay, because you might, there was a change in this as well. So in case you have any questions.
Change in.
On thirty, you mean?
On twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. You haven't done twenty-nine yet.
That's where we are. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
So I'm going to take the vote. Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty to authorize the board.
I would like to make a motion to table this item for the purpose. Of looking at another existing Trumbull County building and considering looking at. The feasibility of constructing new near the EMA. At the same time, so it could be wrapped in, because there's, we'll also have another building that's vacant with the Chestnut Street Health Department. County-owned.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Item, item number thirty is to authorize the Board of Commissioners clerk to advertise for request for qualification statements from professional firms. For the purpose of conducting a feasibility analysis to provide recommendations for the development and renovation of a new public safety dispatch center. Trumbull County nine-one-one in coordination with the, with other county officials will rank and select. The most qualified firm to perform the feasibility analysis. And to authorize Trumbull County nine-one-one to enter into negoti, negotiations. With the most qualified firm to develop a final price proposal for the necessary professional services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Discussion. The buildings that were chosen to.
There, there have been no buildings chosen, Commissioner. There's, there isn't even the nine-one-one panel that's even been assembled yet.
Talking, we do not interrupt. Please be.
Okay, well, you're talking about stuff that's non-existent.
You're not.
Your last motion was, made no sense.
Be respectful and, and, and share the meeting appropriately. So the meetings, I'm sorry, the buildings that were selected to be considered with this feasibility study are.
They're not, they weren't selected to be with this feasibility study.
There were three.
There were three options looked at. New buildings and any others that come up are going to be considered also.
Commissioner, but the nature of a feasibility study is to take into account different options.
Exactly.
If we have another option, we'll consider that in the feasibility study.
So that's, that's the option that I wanted to discuss, including, and that option is the. That option is our Chestnut Health Department building. It already has IT in it. And we, we're going to be paying for the utilities or weatherizing it. So I'm just.
And it has a ton of interference, because it has a power substation right in the backyard. There's no way you can have electronic communications next to that. That's already been told to us by. All law enforcement that we've talked to during these meetings. That's not even an option.
I've already been speaking to the coroner's office about potentially moving into that building. So there is that.
You can't put a nine-one-one communication center next to a power station.
Make sure it's not. Yeah, I'm just concerned about having other vacant buildings.
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah. And also the EMA, the EMA location would be ideal for a nine-one-one center. I think that that was originally in the thought of many people years before I got here. And I'd like to consider that, because if you're looking at feasibility of renovating a new building. It's not, it's not a county-owned, there's no leases in place, there's, there's so many variables. So at the same time, I think it would be a good idea to have them consider new construction as well as. Retrofitting buildings to meet their needs.
I thi, I think right now, everything's on the table, you know?
Well, it doesn't say that in the specification, the RFQ.
It doesn't say that there are three buildings that we're considering either.
In the RFQ, it says, it does not say a new building. Can we at least modify it to include that? So that we can compare and see what would be the most appropriate thing at this, at, at one time, rather than, say, they come back. And they say, hang on, say they come back and say, you know, none of these buildings are going, going to be ideal.
Then we look at new construction.
That's, well, I just, I'm, you know, being efficient, I'm just thinking that it would be a good idea.
Not efficient, I don't think.
Being efficient is getting started now. And, and we have to assemble a nine-one-one board first before we do any of this.
And looking at existing options that are out there. And looking at existing options that are out there before we say, hey, we're going to build new.
Our nine one one board has not been existence for eight years.
It's. I understand. And that should have been, that should have been done. And I, and it hasn't. It didn't while, um, while Patty was. The, I, I, we need a plan too. Our plan is so, so expired. That needs to be addressed too. But at the same time, I'm just saying that. This is a building that is incredibly important. And I think that we need to consider, I think we should consider looking over the, on North River Road where.
And, and that is a good consideration, but if we have some options on the table now and one of them fits perfectly, we don't have to look any further.
And we don't have to spend the money on new construction.
Right. So let's, let's weed someone's out first. If we've got three here or more, let's start the process. This doesn't say they, they're, we're only doing this for three buildings and that's it. Doesn't say that anywhere.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking, is Tate, is the director in here?
PC bond, nine one one coordinator. Uh, it does have three properties listed that we are asking them to take a look at. Uh, but in past feasibility studies that I've been involved with, generally, if they find that those three buildings do not meet the specifications. Then they will recommend new construction or looking at further sites. Um, we've had that happen in the past. So that is an option. And in regards to the nine one one board, we are in the process of getting that reseeded. Um, I've been here, I think, two months now. So we're, we're trying to get that going right now. And I've sent some names. And the, uh, new criteria under state, uh, ORC one twenty eight to get those done.
And, okay, so back to what I said was the three were in there. They are in there. And if, and if it's generally done, that doesn't mean that they will, if the RFQ doesn't outline that. So I'm hoping that you can say, and revise it to allow for, you know, or any other buildings that were brought or, you know, something to that effect. Cause.
Well, let's start with these three buildings.
Impression, yes, but then you might have to do a, a new RFQ. And if they generally do that, can you put that in to show if these ones aren't good, then to, then to, um.
Did you read the RFQ?
Did you? Because you didn't.
No, because it hasn't been written yet. So we can write it that way.
There is, wasn't that what was written?
The RFQ request for qualification statements has been written.
I read it. And it identifies those three buildings.
And ultimately, I work under the direction of you three. So if you want me to add a fourth line saying, or other potential sites.
I think that would be wise.
Whatever you would like me to do.
That would be fine, but that doesn't.
Thank you.
That doesn't hold this up of what we're doing here because we don't have that with us.
It actually identifies three, and I think that that's a wise idea because if they generally do it, you can't expect them to if it's not outlined in the RFQ. So.
But I, but I definitely think those three properties need to be looked at first because you guys have done your due diligence as far as delineating which properties need to be looked at.
No, I'm not saying not to. I'm just saying to make it a little more broad so that if we see something else that comes up or. It could be something that we could look at.
Yeah, we could always modify that down the road, but that's fine.
We could do it now and be way easier.
It doesn't matter. We're, we're arguing semantics. So.
Okay. So, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Add a line. That's fine. You want to add a line? That's, that's fine. It hasn't been printed yet. It hasn't been published yet, I should say.
It hasn't been published.
So, so let's just go ahead and make a little modification, but that does not affect the agenda item as it sits here today.
No, we can just, so, you know.
We're arguing over nothing.
Right.
I'll modify that and get it released.
Not really, because once we, we're voting to approve something that I read and I.
Right. But if, if those options don't work out, you can modify the RFQ. That's all.
Thank you.
May have to do that anyway.
All right.
Vote.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
There was another one that was in, I talked to our director already about, it said an, an and or. The board or the director, but it has to go through the board. So like, there's little things in there that we kind of need to clean up. All right.
Okay. So for item thirty, the vote, Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Okay. Item thirty one. To enter into agreements with municipalities listed for services of the public defender's office.
I would, I'd like to table this motion. The reason being. Is, uh, we had a dispute last year with Lordstown about their fee they're being charged twenty one hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, Bill Blank from Lordstown met with myself and the public defender's representative. And he just wanted to know why he was paying more than Cortland Hubbard, McDonald and some of the other entities. And they couldn't give a reason and they couldn't figure out where they came up with these prices. They called the state. We still have not received a, an answer yet, uh, from the state public defender's office on how they came up with any of these prices. So for us to go ahead and we haven't solved the dispute that Lordstown had last year. To go and bill them the same amount again for this year when we haven't rectified last year's yet, I feel would be irresponsible. So we made some calls yesterday. They said they're going to look into it deeper and, but we need to figure out why. These prices are what they are, where these numbers came from, and nobody seems to know where they came from.
I'll second it.
And, and then discussion. Um. Just so you know, if they were going to enter an agreement, it would still be up to that individual entity to sign it or not.
And they have not in Lordstown.
So that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect, affect it either way if we approve this. But I do want to say that I like to see, and I called Danza, Bill Danzo. I want to see the cost from last year and the cost from this year from everything and a, a sample of the agreement. Because as a board, we should not, in my opinion, just be voting on what's before us without doing some level of due diligence to see what the previous costs were. What a sample of the, of the, um, contract is, and, and then maybe even the caseload or the number, something. We, we need to have a little bit more, I believe, before we make this decision.
I agree. And that's what they, they had no invoice for us. It was itemized. And the bill they gave us this year is the same as last year, but there's no breakdown of how they achieve those numbers to bill each of those entities different amounts. So that's what I'd like to see also. Before we bring this back. And, and vote on it, we need to see some type of an itemized bill rather than just paying what they say.
Suggest that, uh. That the, um, our, our clerks send a question to the prosecutor's office related to their past expenses or the past fees. The current fees that are being recommended and something to indicate the level of service reach of the communities. Um, so that we can, and on, on what basis did they, um, come up with these figures?
I mean, we did go through our prosecutor's office and they didn't know. So they're the ones that were actually referred us to deal directly with the public defender's office in the state. Our prosecutor said he didn't know. It wasn't his bill.
Okay.
And he had no breakdown of that. So we just have this request again from the Ohio Public Defender's Office to give us an itemized bill instead of a, a, a big bill.
Okay.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll work on that to try to bring that up again soon because we know these people are going to need paid, but. Okay. That concludes our regular business. Um, I've got some more business that came up. I was up late and I apologize to my. Colleagues up here for not getting this on the agenda, but I think it's important. Um, we finally got, uh, bids in and scored and graded for the design. Um, for the engineers building roof. And, uh, the, the Cortland garage, I should say, and the stone building. And these just came in yesterday late. They were able to be rated and I've got some motions I'd like to make to be able to start or to award the contracts for engineering. So we don't hold the process up any later.
I would, I would, uh, I would prefer to do a special meeting tomorrow to give me an opportunity to review, uh, the bids.
Um, I'm going to make the motion. We'll see what happens with that. First would be to award a contract to Dawn Incorporated. Twenty eight sixty one Sephar Avenue Northwest, Warren, Ohio. Design build project for the Highway Engineers Cortland Garage Roof at thirty six fifty four Warren Meadville Road, Cortland, Ohio. Uh, note, Dawn was scored and graded by a three panel board. And I have the. Um, design build qualifications tabulation sheet here. Uh, Bill Hart, are you here? Can you come up and explain this?
Can I, can I have a copy of it?
Okay.
Do you have a copy there?
No, I don't.
You gave her a copy. How did, did you give one?
If I didn't give it, maybe I forgot because I had them all yesterday.
No, yeah. I have a box against it.
Yep.
Or if you're trying to put it on.
Probably in the bin.
I.
It might be mailbox.
That's why he's the only one that had the tablet. But I thought I gave him to everybody.
But, but you go ahead and explain a bill so we.
Open. So no wonder you didn't look at these.
So commissioners, the bid tabulations for the Highway Engineers Garage Roof is a design build. It was done by three people, one, the architect engineer that we paid the five hundred dollars for to advertise for. Uh, Nick Coggins and our building inspector, uh, Mr. Mike Slawinski. I'm sorry, Phil Hart, Trumbull County Maintenance. Um, so they scored, they graded based on the qualification packet that they received from our, uh, uh, clerk. Christina, who sent them out emails. I passed them out. So they reviewed them. I did not grade any of these. These are on me. These are all from the people that you see on the sheets. And for the stone building, we're going out for an RFQ. There's only two individuals that, uh, send in applications for those. And those are graded as well by the three people that were there. So.
Same three individuals.
Yeah, same three individuals, different projects.
And Bill did say, Commissioner, do you want to wait till next week and review this at the, the, um, workshop and then put on night agenda next week? With winter coming up, I really don't want to wait on the, the building for Cortland Garage. We've got a lot of heat for the process where we're at right now. And to wait another week, if this is, you've already got the bids, you've already rated, they've already been rated by the same people that would rate it today as they would next week. Um, I, I trust the process with that, that they did follow the curriculum correctly.
And the office does have the qualifications in their, in the, whether they keep on the filing cabinet, the rolodex over there, but they are here on property. So they're, you know, available to view, all of them, RFQs and the RF design builds.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table. To award the contract to.
I, I mean. How long was this out to bid?
It was seventeen days. Supposedly it's recommended seventeen is minimum.
Seventeen minutes.
But we got them back and I got them all back and graded and scored and presented it to the board, which didn't have a form yesterday.
The bid and the alternative.
There's. There is no.
There's no alternative on these ones?
So the design build firm is going to, we selected or they selected, we're putting in motion the move ahead with the process. So they are going to come with their best, cheapest, great price that we could get for the roof.
And there's no. You know, okay. So none of them have an alternative that could be.
That's why, yeah, we grade them by their experience on the design build, not the qualifications for the stone building. We graded them on their knowledge of their design build or their RFQs. So. The properties that they're looking at, they looked at, they designed it. CJL has been here, did a lot of work for the county.
Was it?
For the stone buildings, I think it's CJL.
You're recommending, can I see that? Or wait, this is.
The, the one I did first was this one. I didn't, I didn't recommend or make a motion on the other one yet.
This is just the roof, right? You're talking first the roof.
First, we're just talking the roof on the Highway Engineers Garage. Hey, we had these yesterday, Commissioner. You could have come to the workshop and seen this stuff. Now we're wasting everybody in this room's time.
No, we're not. I think everyone in the room should be hearing this. And.
A lot of them did yesterday if they listened to the workshop.
And there, you're taking into, this is experience with roofing design for similar. Okay, you are. And then the next, the second one is.
Second one will be.
Oh, wait.
This one. Second one will be to award a contract to CJL Engineering, North Meridian Road, Youngstown. The Stone Building Design Qualification Project. Note CJL was scored and graded by a three panel board.
So they are both, they, who, um, who all responded?
Two.
For this one, two, and the other one was three. Okay.
And the commissioner's office has all those.
There were, you reviewed the packets. There's nothing incomplete.
I didn't grade the package. So they, the three individuals looked at the packets, graded the packets.
And that, this was also seventeen days out?
Yep.
And these go hand in hand with it, uh, agenda item thirteen, as far as we're going to borrow and with notes, uh, to move this forward.
Okay. Well, this has three. Wait, three triad, CJL. Oh, no, there was two. Okay. All right.
There's a motion on the table for the first one. Again, that was Dawn Incorporated for the Highway Engineers, uh, Cortland Garage Roof.
I'll second it.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Commissioners, may I?
Well, I'd, I'd also like to make a motion on the second one first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The second one, I'd like to make a motion from the floor to award a contract to CJL Engineering, ten forty four North Meridian Road, Suite B. Youngstown, Ohio, four four five oh nine. The Stone Building Design Qualification Project, one oh six High Street, Warren, Ohio, four 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 eight one. Uh, CJL was scored and graded by a three panel board.
I'll second it.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners moving.
Had something else, right?
I have something else. Yes. I'd like to ask commissioners to make another motion to the floor to legally advertise for our job and family windows. They came in this morning. Uh, I have a, the prosecutor's, uh, approval to go ahead and for the notice if you commissioners choose to move forward with the roof.
And we will be.
And it was something that I know that we were talking about when the ARPA money came available to, because it's a knowledgeable use.
Use. It was, but I didn't put in all the language for that. It was just for the hiring of the firm to go ahead for the RFPs.
This will be borrowed from the notes, uh, along with the other projects.
Why couldn't this just be used out of ARPA? But.
That's not my choice.
Prefer to do that.
I, I think we did a lot of county projects with our, but we were trying to do a lot more with, um. Thank you. We, we were trying to answer your question, Commissioner. We were trying to do a lot more with the, the townships and different nonprofits, uh, to free up dollars to do that. I mean, it's six on one hand, half dozen on the other, but, um.
Is it going to cost more than a million dollars if they want to give, uh, the chamber?
I don't.
Who's they? Who's they?
You, you, you preliminarily approved the.
Who approved it?
I don't remember us voting on it. Did you vote on it more?
No.
Okay.
I thought it was taken for under advisement for us to talk about further.
Right.
And at a workshop, you weren't here yesterday, so we'll do it next Tuesday.
Good.
I'm okay with this. Someone want to make a motion in regards, in regards to this?
Uh, make a motion to approve, um, a, at the advertisement for the, uh, Job and Family Services Building for new windows, uh, for the Job and Family Services Building.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Uh, yes. And I just want for the record, it's to be known that I prefer to use ARPA money.
Okay. Uh, someone from the floor, Alexandra?
Commissioners, I just wanted to draw your attention real quick. You are the board. You can do as you please. This is Alexandra Divan Jancy Bush, Human Resources Director. I would like you to draw your attention to number twenty seven. Um, while I understand the reason for the date change, I want to give you the reasons for why it was October thirtieth. Per twenty four ninety three CBA, I only have thirty days to fill a job. If I don't fill that job within thirty days, I'm non-compliant with the contract. Notice the job posting was September nineteenth through September twenty seventh. The twenty seventh fell on a Friday. And the new pay period started on a Monday. Therefore, the union was okay with me, you know, putting this transfer effective October thirtieth. If we change it to November first, I'm just warning you that they will grieve it, that we're outside of our thirty days. I'm just making sure that you guys are aware of that.
It's a good point.
Thank you.
It, and then if we don't do that, then that we, it's like letting someone start a job before the commissioners approve it is, is horribly wrong. So if.
What, what about all of the, all of the.
I was just going to say, unfortunately.
All those started already. Someone back in April.
My hands are tied from a human resources director. You have to understand. I mean, I have to make sure people get job shadowed. I have to make sure I do my due diligence and making sure that people are qualified for these jobs. We only have thirty days. That's not a lot of time when you also understand that somebody else job shadowed and declined the job. So we went above and beyond to make sure that this process was done properly.
Is, is our union really going to grieve that if they know the, the, the situation?
Well, I'm going to leave that up to you. I'm just making you aware of what the potential, you know, situation may become. I'm just making you aware.
Potential cause.
I suggest is maybe talk, talk to the union, explain the situation. And then if we need to rescind it next week or change it, then, then we do that.
Also, one more thing that I just want to make sure you're aware of. Monday, the thirtieth was a new pay period. HR department has done a very. I will say, I've been working extremely hard with the auditor's office, specifically payroll, to streamline our processes, which I thought people would be a little bit more thankful for. And what I mean by that is. And what I mean by that is when we implement new changes in payroll, it's extremely hard for people to pay people at one rate, then another rate, another day, so on and so forth. We're trying to implement and streamline these processes as an HR department to make sure that any change is done effective a new pay period. With that being said, I would have to wait until the next pay period, which means this gentleman would go potentially four weeks outside of the thirty days.
So what do you, what do you recommend?
He shadowed last week. I included this in your packet.
Yes, and that's when you sent it over. There's no reason that you, we have meetings that are regular meetings, but at the same time, if if time is of the essence, there's no reason to say, not to say commissioners, here's the situation, we need a special meeting just for the purpose of approving a transfer so that we're completely compliant on both sides.
And I understand that. The gentleman literally gave me this on Thursday, on Thursday. I got it in last minute to even get it on the agenda this week. I gave you all that information, so you were clear.
I'd have been happy to come in on Friday for a special meeting.
I couldn't have gotten a quorum without, I mean, I I don't know what you expect me to do. I understand what you're saying, but I'm one person and I can only, I can't make all three of the board come in and vote on something.
I think, I think this is, this is really digging here. We've many, many times before, not only myself, but this board has retroactively done something and we're talking one day in a pay period where the guy did do the work on that day. He did do the the new job work on that day.
Sure that I'm stressing this is per CBA. This is not just because I want to. This is per the contract.
Bait the union either by spite, by saying.
It could be more costly to go through the grievance process.
I just want to forewarn you, you can do as you want, board, but I'm making sure that you're aware of where our process was on this.
The other thing is they can grieve it and you can, we can agree.
Which costs a lot of people a lot of money for no reason.
It costs, it it costs me time. I I'm going to be honest with you. It costs your HR director who's being paid whatever I'm being paid. I'm, it's a lot of time and money. It it is.
Not, not to do unnecessary work. If we can fix it today.
To from my eyes, it could be possible to just allow them to grieve it and you say, yep, it's correct. And but then at the same time, we're correct in making sure that we're paying people according to the date that they were.
Paid retroactive before.
And I see the theory of that and we should have brought you up during discussion. We should have had discussion on this and we
Well, I would have appreciated that if you would have.
We should have done that. That was, that was
Please call your director up to the table and make sure that I give you the reasons why.
Or we do not, so.
And I, that's why I'm coming up to tell you. If you have a question, just ask, I'll explain it to you. There's a reason why we did this, not because Alex wants to. Just because I think it's the right thing to do following the CBA.
Choosing not to do it now. So there's a motion to rescind, I'll make a motion to rescind.
I'll go back to, what did you just say?
I'll make a motion to rescind Agenda Item.
Revised code as well.
Agenda item.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, is it twenty-seven? Agenda item twenty-seven. Make a motion to rescind that as it was
Modified.
Modified by Commissioner Frenchco.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because I don't believe it's compliant with revised code now.
And then I'll make a motion to authorize the transfer of Mr. Bailey Slick, Agenda Item number twenty-seven, as written in the agenda.
I'll second that.
For Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco, because I don't believe it was compliant with the revised code. No.
It's not compliant with the CBA.
Well.
Well, and I would like clarification on that going forward. I mean, the human resources is human resources, right? We're dealing with human beings and transfers all the time. This, this is, this has happened way before me. I can give you multiple examples of this happening. This is not something that's new, but it is concerning that we, you know, just ask, ask the questions, let us have the conversation because we don't want to get ourselves into a situation. Or how do you expect me to handle that situation going forward? I mean, people move daily in this county and unfortunately we don't know about it till we know about it. People resign. We accept their resignations well after. You do realize that, right? I mean, we just did that last week.
Resignation is different. So let's just, as a human resources director, make sure that the county is compliant and there's nothing that you do that would cause an audit finding.
I'm sure on that. Thank you.
I think doing the right thing is never wrong and we can always fix our mistakes with this also. And in this situation, why are we going to waste more time and money when we clearly see what the right thing to do is here and nobody's going to fault us for that?
Okay.
Then mark it down, call the auditor, whatever you want to do with it, that's fine. I think they'll understand with that too. We're doing the right thing here, saving the county money.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I have a couple of points of clarification and then I have a question for the board. The points of clarification with regard to the windows, the, the only thing that was applied for, the only application that was made for ARPA was for the engineering. That's why only the engineering was paid for. Secondly, with regard to the ask from the Mahoning Valley, was it partners? Is that what they're called through the chamber? They are not asking for ARPA money. That was not an ARPA application. They're asking for general fund.
Oh, okay.
And that was pretty clear in in their application.
They did get money through ARPA in Mahoning County, but they did not ask for ARPA money.
Requested ARPA from Mahoning. Mahoning then gave them money out of the general fund. Last week at the initial TID meeting, the organizational meeting, it was requested that I meet with Attorney Danzo to clarify some things with regard to the TID being a separate organization and specifically what we can and cannot do as a county with regard to that. The letter was to the commissioners was mentioned at the TID meeting and there was talk of waiving privilege. However, that was not done and really could not be done at the TID meeting. It has to be done in a meeting of the commissioners. In speaking with Mr. Danzo, he, he said that a lot of our questions actually are answered in that letter. So I'm actually requesting the board today to waive privilege on that letter so that I can get that and waive privilege so that the board can have the letter.
My wife privilege on it. I did it at the TID, but I guess it doesn't count.
No, correct.
I didn't see, I didn't see the letter that was sent.
It was to all of you.
It was to the entire board.
Okay. Well, I, I, I wanted to make sure that some of my questions were included too. Did, did you?
He, Mr. Danzo has reviewed the meeting where you asked the questions. He's looked at it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And one more thing, I think it's noteworthy. Sorry, just going to be really quick. The Board of Commissioners, since they first off, the the TID was sent over six weeks before to be put on the agenda and it sat and for I'm not sure what reason, but it didn't get put on the agenda. And then when I found out that it was going on the agenda, I was concerned to make sure that it was done the right way. Put it on the way it was recommended by the group through our county engineer. And had it been done at that time, I wholly believe that we would have been able to have an application in time for the round because the county's TID has missed the deadline.
You're absolutely wrong. That is the biggest lie you've told since I've been here, Commissioner. It was told by Mr. Kinnick at the meeting, we missed absolutely nothing. You got to prioritize or wants. We haven't even done that yet. We haven't even have the bylaws yet. If we'd went with the TID the way you wanted it, with a thirteen member board, with the way Niles Council is and Howland Trustees and the other trustees would have to be involved, we would not even be at that point yet to even have the full TID voted on yet to even have a meeting. So for you to say that the way we did it was wrong and accuse us of missing out on money, that is a lie and that could be checked. That could be a documented check that the newspaper, anybody can look to see when the last deadline was and what has entailed in the TID that we need to get ready to be even to be able to apply for the money? Maybe if we had put the TID together six months ago or six years ago, but to say it was six weeks ago.
Is someone going to investigate why our office let something sit for six weeks and cost us an opportunity for
Six weeks, so it would have done nothing. What are you talking about? Did you present anything forward?
Sure, every, every commissioner can put anything on the, on the agenda at any time.
Sent to our clerk to be put on the agenda. It sat for sex, six weeks and okay.
This is all a lie. This is all a lie.
Can you be, like, I understand that you have no respect for me, but I'm still a commissioner and I'd like to be able to talk.
Right. I have no respect for people that lie to the public, that lie and know it's a lie.
Okay.
Documentable.
I will talk without your interruption if you can calm yourself down. So, as I was saying, it was sent over six weeks, six weeks before it was put on the agenda.
From who?
I'm, this is not.
You said it's sent over. Let's get the facts out then. Let's get the facts out. Don't just throw any windows. Who sent it over six weeks ago and what exactly was sent over? Someone proposing, maybe we get a TID, somebody sending an email. What was sent over? What sat there?
I will talk.
Nothing sat there that we proposed because we just proposed it.
To go and take the mic and act like I'm a part of the citizen body. Will you be more respectful? Because I'll go over there and talk if you, if you're not going to shut your mouth.
Go ahead and talk. Go ahead and talk. But be factual.
Six weeks prior to it going on the agenda, it was sent to our clerk, the agenda item, the, the require, the agenda item with the intent to put together a TID and it was recommended that they do it in the fashion that the group who had already been meeting for the purpose of putting it together had identified, which was the way that that would include representatives from the two largest cities and the largest township and it, there was, there was another statutory way to do it. Those people had already been meeting and were representatives of those communities, which would have caused them to quickly identify because they probably already had in mind who they were going to have as a representative. Probably, most likely the people who were there. I, I know.
Sounds like backdoor meetings. I didn't know anything about a meeting. Did you know anything about a meeting, Mark? In regards to a TID, sounds like there must have been backdoor meetings somewhere where people were preparing how they were going to hand out board seats to their friends.
And the commissioners informed the TID had no idea of these meetings.
Yeah, where was these meetings? Were these public meetings or were these, what meetings were these?
Okay, these were the meetings of the body that also recommended the Golden Triangle. So they are professional planners and work in finance. One of them was, yeah.
Were they public meetings? Were they in someone's house?
Financing projects. I'm not going to be gaslit here. I'd like to have an opportunity to speak without your disrespectful antics.
You're just
Stop insulting me. Please stop.
Please.
Stop. Both of you stop. If you can talk.
You are unhinged. You are unhinged.
So the group of people who came together are a group of professionals, professional planners who were working towards developing a TID in that fashion and they represented those communities. They, it was a preliminary planning phase and the reason that they sent it in that way was because they would already have people with the resources in order to make those things happen. So one of the things that we, no one's brought up is that there is no legal counsel. The, there is no legal counsel for the TID. So for example, if Niles was going to be part of the TID, they might have sent over Mr. Zuzolo or someone like that. So we would have had, you know, if we needed a secretary or treasurer, they might have sent over someone with that technical capacity as a representative. They've done this before and that is what should have happened. And if that would have happened and we would, they would have come together back when it was on the agenda the first time, they had enough time to go to their councils to get these things. They could have had special meetings in order to do that and been able to apply for the application by yesterday's deadline. I'm disappointed that this played out the way it did and our, our county missed an opportunity for a quarter of a million dollars.
Which project? And it's a half a million dollars you can request on a TID, not a quarter million dollars.
Stayed on that much. Okay.
Uh, no, we didn't have a project ready to go. We were far from being ready to apply. There's a big process of getting that.
That's because you weren't involved. The other, there is a list of projects that I had already.
Who are these people? Is this like Bill Gates, the Koch Brothers? Who are you talking about? They're meeting in private to discuss this thing that we had no access to. I mean, this is, there's some mysterious body of businessmen out there somewhere that are meeting that had it all planned out and we foiled their plans by following the Ohio Revised Code and requesting the TID the way everyone else does it.
No.
It sounds shady, shady, shady to me.
It, it was, if you want to call Darlene St. George and Mikey.
Oh, they were part of it too? Is that it was a public? Where was this at?
I've talked to the
St. George have a public meeting regarding a TID. Is that someone you can look up on the public on the website in Howland Township?
Can you please just
Okay.
Run a meeting without being an asshole? Thank you.
Commissioner, I've talked to those communities. They have no problem with how the commissioners have formed the TID. No problem whatsoever.
Okay.
The only one who has a problem with it is you.
No, actually, Mr. Dr. La Paula was told that Darlene would still be a part of it and by Commissioner Malloy, and then I was at their, their township meeting that night and he said that, no, Darlene's still a part of it. Then he told me.
No, I said Howland still has representation. Randy Smith lives there. They are part of Eastgate, so they have Mr. Kinnick representing them.
They're also a part of the planning commission.
They are part of the planning commission, of which Darlene St. George is a board member. That's what I said.
Okay.
So you heard a third person, so it's truth to you and so you're going to spew it out without checking your facts, third person.
Very dangerous.
Very dangerous. Okay.
I know you're upset. You didn't get a chance to appoint some of your friends during election season. I know you're upset about that. We didn't need to. This is the most efficient way. This is the most efficient way to get it done. It's the most efficient way. We got it done. We had our first meeting.
Opportunity for a half million dollars.
We're losing people here, Commissioner. Come on.
Okay.
We had a meeting last week and you saw we are far from being ready to apply.
Commissioners, Herm Brewer, Trumbull County Veteran Services Director, I want to thank you, today being November first, the start of Military Appreciation Month. Trumbull County has a, a long and storied history in support of its military veterans and the Board of County Commissioners have always been very supportive. So item number eight on your agenda today was for Trumbull County to join in Operation Green Light. It's a partnership between the National Association of Counties, the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers and Amazon Veterans Organization to op, to light up the administration buildings throughout the county green from November sixth through November twelfth. You guys should all be proud that the fifteen thousand veterans in Trumbull County are well served. In twenty, twenty twenty-two, the County Veterans Office brought in a hundred and fifty-five million dollars to the residents of Trumbull County through the way of disability benefits, pension benefits, education benefits and healthcare benefits. Last year, our office had been visited by one thousand new applicants for benefits. We're seeing increasing numbers since last year. It was the, the largest piece of legislation in veteran benefits history was signed into law in August of twenty twenty-two. So I wanted to recognize you all for your continued, for your continued support of veterans.
Thank you, sir.
Aw, thank you.
We received as a challenge coin. Challenge coins are a part of the military culture. It's a way to recognize those who do good things in support of the mission. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Mr. Chairman, we also have a resolution here for, I don't know if we want to read this today or we just want to send it with them. Whatever the board's pleasure is.
But I'd like you to read it if you could, Mark.
Before you leave, I want to ask something.
Okay, if you, if you would, I'll, I'll just, I'll, yes. Oh, yes. She's right behind you there. Thank you. Very nice. So, um, is it all right? Forward if I?
Yep. Tomorrow where, maybe to the microphone where they can see Herm.
I want to get up here too, just because the only
This thing's kind of low, but uh, this is a resolution by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners supporting Operation Green Light for our veterans. And whereas the residents of Trumbull County have great respect, admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Trumbull County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community and the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health, disability and compensation benefits each year, and ours does a phenomenal job. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during the first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas the Trumbull County, Trumbull County Commissioners appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believe specific recognition should be granted. So therefore be it resolved with designation as a green light for Veterans County. Trumbull County hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, November 11th, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform, transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Trumbull County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 6th through the 12th, 2023. Herm and Bob, thank you so much for what you do. We have one of the model, uh, Veterans Service Commission in the state. Uh, Herm has served on the national, uh, national platform as the president of Veteran Service Commissioners. Uh, they are so incredibly active because we have such a rich history of veterans in this county. Such a rich history of taking care of our veterans in this county. I want to thank you all and appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You don't know. You want to take a photo?
Nope. We broke that phone.
I think I'm breaking a button on my shirt.
Okay.
Thank you, both guys. Thank you. Oh, no, is there Veterans Outreach?
How many veterans do we have in the room here today? Thank you all too.
Thank you both and thank you to the Veteran Service Commission.
Okay, wait for our clerk to get back for just a second if we would. Okay, Tacey.
Tacey, my 911 director. Um, one of the things you guys tasked me with when I came here was to, uh, revisit the billing that we're doing for the agencies that we dispatched for. Um, per the 911 final plan that needs updated that we've already talked about. Originally, there was a cost for service per call and then it was supposed to be reviewed annually by CPI increase every year. For the last 10 years, that has not been done due to the fact that we don't have the 911 review board seated and past management. Um, what I did is I took the numbers from 2012 and extrapolated the last CPI for every year, uh, doing that cost for increase with a $7 per call for service. Previously, it was $5.90 for call for service. Um, long story short, over that 10 years, it's about 30% that we've missed out on collecting. Floated that to the police and fire chiefs at a meeting a couple of weeks ago to kind of see where they stood. Obviously knowing everybody's doing more with less as far as services and don't have the money budgeted and funding. That 30% increase was a lot for them to take. It, it went over like a lead balloon as to be expected. Um, so what I would like to do with your approval or blessing is prepare and present to them doing a 10% increase this year. 10% next year, 10% the third year. Unless we can get some other funding mechanism written out in the 911 plan, which we are going to be reviewing and trying to get done. This is just a temporary solution to buy us time to get that, uh, 911 plan updated. Because on top of everything else, that's going to take some time to get done. Um, additionally, we have a contract with Warren that's due, um, for extension or renewal at the end of this year. Um, that's going to need to be revisited, um, and talk to them as well because there's some variation in the contract language that we need to work out. Um, just because of things that that have changed through circumstance of, of staffing and, um, where the backup is supposed to be and those items. So I would like kind of your blessing to go ahead and move forward and kind of present to the police and fire chiefs for 10% increase for the next year. Um, because their budgets are coming up due here. Budget talks in November and we're already November 1st.
Can you give an example? He gave us yesterday, the bizetta one.
Um, so Bizetta PD, for example, their calls for service in 2022 were 4,278 calls for service. Uh, at a charge of $7 per call for service, they previously were paying $2,495.50. The 10% increase would take them to $2,745.05 per month. Um, what this will do, we will bill quarterly as well. Um, I think previously we were billing all over the place, various months, quarterly. Um, we're going to go to quarterly. That way it's easier for everybody to handle the, the payments coming in and going out. Um, but essentially what that would do is the police departments yearly previously were at 495, police and fire combined were $495,055.68. Uh, the new plan, if we go forward with the 10%, would bring in 778,223.60, which is an increase of 283,167.92, which would help us limp along with equipment needs, licensing and, and stuff like that, that we are not currently funded for. It would take us overall, uh, the previous Warren contract was 623,184. Um, my suggestion would be to take them to 631,839.54. It's a slight increase of about $8,600. It's not a lot, but when we're looking at the current contract, um, we absorbed six dispatchers previously for them coming over to our center. And through past administrations, there's no actual formula for how they came up with that 623 number. Um, what I did is I took the six dispatchers at their top scale, which is right around $87,000 with benefits. Multiply that by six and charge them $3.50 for call for service because they're already paying for the wages of six dispatchers. And that would get you to that 631,839.54 number. Um, and preliminary just discussions, um, they seemed okay with that. Um, but obviously there's room for, for that to change.
That, what percentage is that?
Uh, for them, that's only like a 1.5%.
So you're charging the townships 10% and the city of Warren a 1%?
Well, if you look at it in terms of overall, um, Warren Town, Warren would be paying 631,000. And all the other combined townships, police and fire are paying 778. So Warren is 30% of our call volume.
Yes, and, and the calls are the longest.
But if you take 30% of the total of 778, that puts Warren at about $230,000. And that's where their argument is. Why are they paying 631,000 when they're only 30% of our call volume? And the reason why is because we absorb six dispatchers. That'd be my recommendation as a temporary solution for this year. It increases and brings in more money for us, but it also is buys us time to get that 911 plan reviewed, revisited and work with legal to get that updated.
I was under the impression when we got the prosecutor's opinion about the consolid, the consolidated plan needing done prior to making these changes. Has it been approved by our prosecutor's office that these changes can?
I, I worked with Bill and he thought it was a good idea as a temporary solution because he knows doing the 911 plan, redoing it will take time. So this is an interim fix.
This is sort of a stop.
Seen anything from him. So if you could forward something, I'd like to see that.
Can do. We've had a couple of conversations. I don't think there's anything in writing. Um, I need, that's why we're kind of at this stage right now of getting your blessing and moving forward.
I'm okay with that. I think one and a half percent increase on Warren's a little light. I'd like to see more of a 3% rather than the one and a half, but I do understand there was no formula for that to get there. So it's one you kind of created, which may be correct, may not be correct. It's, that's subjective. Um, but I like the idea of breaking up 10%, 10 and 10 instead of giving a whole 30 at one time. I don't think that's fair to anybody because of our ineptness in 911 in the past to dumping on people like that. So, um, 10, 10 and 10, I'm agreeable to. Anyone else have input on that?
If you're going to do that, there needs to be a motion. Motion.
I'm, I'm still waiting for discussion to see your thoughts on.
No, I, I, I obviously completely agree. I mean, I, um, we got to stop the bleeding. I mean, that's what it comes down to. And until you, until we get the plan formulated and we get, um, you know, definitive, uh, path forward for this. This is something that we need to do. There has to be increases unfortunately to these communities. Um, it's probably long overdue.
Ultimately, it should be wrapped up and reviewed in the 911 final, final plan as to here's why we charge what we charge and how often it will be revisited. Um, and that way, moving forward, we don't have these questions of how did they come to this dollar amount?
This is also, you know, the funding mechanism for 91, when we talk about general fund and we're always asking about, you know, why can't you do this with the general fund? Why can't you do that? Why can't you supplement transportation? Why can't you do? There are essential services that we have to take care of and unforeseen costs like these things that, that continually, uh, well, unforeseen or increasing costs, let's say, um, that, that we're, that we're always having to deal with. So, um, I, I urge our state legislators to look at 911 in a dip through a different lens. Because the, the, the funding mechanism for it right now is crippling counties and, and, and other communities. I mean, I know Tacey came from a, a county where they actually put on a levy and, um, you know, that, that's, that's a strain too. But there, there needs to be, we need to look at 911 because there's so much attrition in that department. There's so much, uh, instability, not, not with our department, but just across the state. Uh, Tacey, do you agree with that?
100%. And to speak to that, to the funding mechanism that you're talking about, most people don't realize 911 in the state is funded through the WGAF funds, the Wireless Government Assistance Funds. It's a 25 cent fee on your cell phone bill and you, all of us in this room know how much we pay for our cell phone bills.
Right.
That's who's putting the burden on the system. They just, um, tried to raise it to 70 cents, but what they don't tell you in the fine print is that we get 40% of that 70 cents if they actually pass it, which would take it to 28 cents, which is a three cent increase, which is going to do nothing for us. States like Michigan and New York get three and four dollars per cell phone bill. Obviously, if, you know, if you took that 25 cents and multiplied it by 10 to 250, we would go from bringing in, you know, $1 million to $10 million. Obviously, we wouldn't need to be funded by you guys at all. We would be able to be self-funded through that. And that's where the burden needs to be. But unfortunately, at the state level, they have not made a change to increase that to a higher dollar amount.
And we need to talk to our state legislators about that as well. So.
If there's going to be a decision to move forward with that, we need an agenda item or a motion from, from the floor.
I'd like to get it to you guys for the agenda for next week. That's why I wanted to bring it up because I was here at the workshop yesterday, but there was only one here. So that's why I kind of brought it up now.
We can do it next week. That's fine. If, if that pleases the board.
And I want to point out that the burden of the calls are coming from Warren and they're not transferring. And I, and I worked with Patty over the last year or so, over a year ago, uh, on negotiating or taking that to the city of Warren. And they had some solutions that were recommended to them, such as transferring the calls early a, after like, after so many minutes, transferring it so that Warren can handle it themselves, like having their, uh, fire department take the calls or something like that. And that, that's, I don't, it seems like they know that our board is not going to be, do anything in order to cover our costs any better. And again, and I'm going to bring this up because it's unfortunate. We have a commissioner that was communicating with his brother in advance of a meeting that said, hey.
No, that's the chief commissioner. We're not going to take cheap shots like that.
That's because there's a conflict of interest. They.
There's a new commissioner on the board, a new director. So they shouldn't assume anything.
They admitted it and then, and, and, uh, text correspondence that, you know, hey, uh, Patty's going to come in and destroy Merkel or something like that. So I just want to make sure that we are.
Would you please get your facts right?
Accusations and innuendos.
Those text messages.
The only thing I could say.
What we didn't want to have is you negotiate because nobody would come to the table.
The only thing I could say is I.
True fact.
Behind closed doors, you and your brother ironed something out in order to kick the can and keep them at their level.
I had something out. Yeah, you're right.
I next week, next week, I will bring the text messages to the public meeting and read them.
It was on that same hidden meeting where these people put together this body of group that had a plan. We, was it a different one?
Messages when he destroyed evidence, the, um,
You're, you're talking about a case where we have a gag order on and you're suing the county.
This is irresponsible. This is irresponsible.
It's a gag order.
This is irresponsible.
Saying, I, through the course of discovery, looking for other things, I happened to stumble upon communication that related to the 911 negotiations.
Not true.
And I'll give them to you right after the meeting.
Please do.
Okay.
You say the calls are like $7 a person? Is that what you said?
$7 per call for service is what we're going with. It's a, it's a $1.10 increase over what they were previously charged. I don't feel comfortable looking at the Warren contract and the calls that they're handling and our calls that, that we're doing and the previous contract that they had, based off the knowledge I have in the two and a half months that I've been here and talking with Patty, um, feeling comfortable charging them $7 per call for service like everyone else when they're already picking up the tab for six dispatchers. They're essentially paying for a third of our dispatch force right now. We have 19 dispatchers. They're paying for six. Um.
The cost hasn't gone up though.
The cost hasn't gone up, but from, from what I can tell, there is no previous configuration of how they came up to that number.
Right.
And if you take.
And if seven hundred people are getting raises.
778,000 that we're currently charging the police and fire departments and Warren is a third of that. One third of 778 is closer to 270,300, you know, you know what I mean? So if you look at it in that perspective, I can see where Warren would say, why are we paying $700,000 when everybody else?
When you bring this on the agenda, that you break it out, townships for, and then the city separate because he can't vote on that.
Townships, the city and the 23 911 calls Commissioner Frenchko made last year. Maybe she can contribute $161 back in the general fund.
Absolutely ridiculous. Now she's our attorney telling me I can't vote on something.
You, you admitted, you didn't.
23 times she called 911 herself last year. So no room to talk on that. If you're going to make accusations.
Let's play all those 911 cases.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are public record too.
We'll play those in the meeting. We'll put them up on the screen.
Commissioners, uh, if I may, Human Resources Department, uh, Alexander Diman Dungy Bush, I wanted to say something. Uh, Commissioner Keanu Lamesa, I, I really do appreciate that you talk about state legislature. What I need to stress and what I want to stress on behalf of TC, we've had these conversations. 911 dispatchers are classified from a human resources job perspective as clerical across the state.
Yeah.
That is where we really need to be advocating from a state perspective. We can't compensate 911 telecommunicators fairly when they're classified as clerical, which means very little dollars for what they're doing. The state, if I, if I could ask anybody here today, if you ever go, you know, to the state and you're going to legislate for something, 911 communicate, telecommunicators should be first responders, period. Thank you.
We brought this up to the governor himself when he was at our 911 center. I directly said that directly to him. He couldn't believe it himself and his, uh, office of personal management woman, she couldn't, couldn't do anything about it. She knew it was a problem. This is going to take a legislative act from one of our state legislators or state senators.
Recommendation, uh, of what the change that from you, and then it can come from, we can sign it as a board of commissioners and ratify the letter and then send it to, um, also, we could probably, I bet we can get CCAO involved to send to.
To train to classification?
Yeah, to coordinate.
Well, they lobby.
Other commissioners to send something.
And I know it's been done in neighboring states, so I don't see why they can't.
Yeah.
Needs to be done here. Absolutely needs to be done here.
But again, that's a lengthy process. We need to stop the bleeding.
And all this talks here too about the bills and price and this. Kind of like divorce, don't forget the children. The workers there still give 100% of their effort and doesn't matter what they're getting paid back per call. We got to commend the short staffed workers we have there that are working long hours, extremely long hours, mandatory overtimes for the last three years for holding the place together until you got there. So.
The one thing I can say, just in what I've seen and, and the little time I've been here is I don't know how they've maintained the ship afloat for how they have in the last three years. I know when I've come in, Patty's doing three jobs essentially. I've started to try to pick up the slack. Obviously, we have some big projects that you guys have tasked me with. So it's a work in progress. It's going to get worse before it gets better. Um, but the staff there is phenomenal. The hours they put in, the dedication that they're putting in and the type of calls that they're handling and the service they're providing. We are going to try to continue to raise that level of service. So we can streamline everything and have it be, uh, a little bit more structuredized and standardized across the board. And we're working with all the police and fire chiefs to, to accomplish that and take care of it.
And I urge the police and fire chiefs that are going to have a little thing stuck in their craw over these increases to realize the service they're getting and how fortunate they are to get that service. And they've got to take one for the team here with also, we're all in the same boat together.
And we pointed out to them also that for 10 years, they haven't had an increase where everything else in 10 years has gone up exponentially. So I think this 10% will be a good start and I think it will go over fine with, with most of them. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you. And, and just, she's been doing a great job. This is our new 911 director and I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm, I'm impressed. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Likewise. Thank you, Tacey.
Okay, anybody else in the room have anything for the good of the Order of Trumbull County? Okay, how about on the phone lines? We'll go to the phone lines quickly. We do have another meeting at one. Um.
And that is going to be.
It's star six.
Right?
Yes. Yep, it'll be broadcast and it'll be on YouTube after. Uh, star six, please. If you want to unmute your phones. Okay, hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, Uger.
Second.
Mr. Cantle Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, see a lot of you back here at one o'clock.